Good morning. Thank you for being here for our regularly scheduled council briefing. I expect council members to trickle in here, joined by councilmembers Swanton, Musqueta. Thank you for being here. I will give the brief president's report after we'll do the state legislative session update. So why don't we bring the team forward and dive into our legislative agenda? Things are possibly winding down, but never know.
Morning. Lilly Wilson, Codega, Office of Intergovernmental Relations.
Cheryl Swab, OIR.
Karen Cargill, State Relations.
Christina Postle, State Lobbyist.
Okay, thank you for being here. So just dive in.
We have passed the opposite House floor cutoff as of last week, and now legislators have turned their attention to focusing on budget negotiations in the final week, this final week of the regularly scheduled legislative session. There are a high volume of bill signings right now, so we'll continue to update you all about signings that you may be interested in attending. And if you let us know, we're happy to make arrangements for you as well. We appreciate having had Council President Harold "Olympia" with us last week, testifying in support of I-1000 and support from the council on the various priorities where we've been asking you to weigh in with legislators late in the evening and throughout the weekend. So with that, I will turn it over to Karen Cargill, who will give our final legislative session update of the regularly scheduled session.
Good morning. So yes, the last Monday before signee die, so scheduled to adjourn this Sunday. We're still hearing a lot of back and forth regarding the budget. I mentioned last week that there's quite the discrepancy between the two budgets, that there are a lot of differences in revenue, even on some spending items. So we just kind of want to brace everyone that the likelihood of a special session is high. And there's still a lot of unknowns about what will be funded. We know that several of our priorities are included in one budget but not the other. So working through what that might look like as they go into budget negotiations, it gets a little bit more complicated because it doesn't go through like the traditional bill process. So we're continuing to engage in those conversations, and we'll keep you guys updated as those conversations do occur. But just want everyone to be aware that this kind of becomes a little bit of a weird time when they potentially adjourn, if they go into the special, and then they mostly focus on the budget negotiations. So we'll let you know if they do not have a full signee die, or if they do have signee die, but then we anticipate a special session, we'll prepare kind of a light update to give you a rundown of the bills that moved and what ones are still potentially up in the air. And then we'll hold, giving the full signee die report until the budget has been wrapped up, whenever that may be. So any questions on process? Okay, I'm going to move into the bills. Starting on page 2, on education, a lot of good progress still on a lot of the early learning and the childcare legislation that is being considered right now. On top of page 2, House Bill 1303, that was the childcare higher education bill that will be signed by the governor tomorrow. Two other bills related to early achievers and the Childcare Access Work Group, House Bill 1344 and House Bill 1391. The Senate concurred with, or sorry, the House concurred with the Senate amendments last week. So at that point, once the opposite chamber has concurred with any amendments that had happened in the opposite House, it will now head over to the governor's desk after signature from the Speaker and the Senate President. Over on page 3, two of the Senate bills related to ECAP, the Senate Bill 5089, that was the one for the income-eligible three-year-olds, the expansion on the ECAP for the three-year-olds, and then ECAP eligibility 5437, moving the income threshold up to 200%. Those are still waiting to be concurred with, or if they're going to need to go into conference. So we're still waiting to get that information. But has passed both chambers and what this last week is for, to let them work through those differences. We still don't have the whole levy conversation, the school district levy conversation. That's still very, they'll be tied into a lot of the budget negotiations. While it's not tied to the budget, there's a lot of the legislation that has been, that is being considered, had some budget pieces put into the legislation, is on the Senate side, and with the special education components. So unfortunately, there hasn't been much of an update on that. A lot of those developments will happen when the budget negotiations occur. So we will keep you posted on that as well. On page 4, under environment, I wanted to flag House Bill 1257, that's the energy efficiency, and that's for commercial buildings. There's been quite a bit of work on figuring out different ways to help commercial buildings be more energy efficient. So we've been involved in this bill quite a bit, and the House concurred with the amendments made in the Senate on April 18th, so now heading to the governor's desk. And now, I know I said this was going to be my last time bringing this bill up last week, but 1512, our electrification of transportation, is being signed by the governor tomorrow, so I'm very excited about that one.
Can we go back?
Please.
Just going back to the energy efficiency bill, does this then require local municipalities to take additional steps to implement regulations that are authorized?
Yeah, so the original version of the bill, I'm assuming you're referring to the stretch code concept, that was actually pulled out in an earlier version because there was quite a bit of contention around that. And I'm happy to connect with you offline to kind of give you a little bit more intel about what happened with that. We anticipate it coming up in a different version in coming years, but in this form, there was not the appetite to allow for the stretch codes.
Okay, thanks.
And then the last bill for the under environment, Senate Bill 5993, that's on kind of the top of page 7, that's the Mottka bill. So that moved out of its committee last week, out of the Senate Ways and Means Committee. There were some adjustments in the fee associated with that. So it had been, I think, close to about $250 in the original proposal, and they dropped it down to $1.39 per barrel, and that would be the adjustment for the hazardous substance tax. They had originally gone in with kind of just like a goal number that they had wanted to achieve, but after some review of what projects that they wanted to make sure were funded by it, they were able to see that they could have a much smaller fee attached to it. So currently in second reading in the Senate. And again, this is one of those big concepts that's very much tied to the budget conversation. So this concept hasn't been run through the House at all at this stage. So a couple years ago, they did have a similar proposal for this, but there's still quite a bit of back and forth that's going to continue to happen to have something of this significance go forward. For general government, is Bill, oh, sorry.
Just a quick question on the Clean Energy Bill, Senate Bill 5116, that's headed back to the Senate for concurrence. Is that kind of, can feel good that's going to happen now? Or is it like, anything can happen in the next six days?
I mean, anything can happen. I'm always hesitant to overly speculate, but I know that it's gone quite far, and I can't imagine that, at least, maybe if there's conference or something that needs to happen, that that will happen, but...
You're not flagging it for an area of high level of concern?
I am not flagging it for a high area of concern.
Appreciate that.
It's about as close to a yes as Karen says.
Right. So under general government, also on page 7, I just wanted you to note, so Senator Carlisle's privacy bill is not listed on here. I mentioned last week that while it was in committee in the House, that they were having some difficulties moving it out of committee, so ended up stripping the content of the bill and just moved it out as a title-only and intent bill. And they were not able to come to agreement with the language before the cutoff last week, so it's technically considered dead. I know this has received quite a bit of media attention and public interest, so it's one of those bills where I'm going to continue to watch, just in case something happens with it. But at this stage, it is no longer active. House Bill 1403, this is the BNO apportionment formula adjustment. This bill has gone through relatively easy and is actually awaiting signature for the governor. That's happening tomorrow as well. So FAS will be there to give commends for the great work that they did on that bill this year. And then the big bill I wanted to highlight for you all is the wrongful death. Last week, we were able to move that out of the House, and we want to thank everyone for all of their work, especially Councilmember Gonzalez, for reaching out to all the House members and organizing the letter from the council. I know that those were very well received, and it's already been signed by the Speaker and the Senate President, so off to the governor's desk. So we'll let you know as soon as we, once it arrives. And also, just a kind of a flag, at this, I think it's, at this stage, a session, once the bill hits the governor's desk, it has five days for signature. But the, from when it's actually signed to when it's delivered, that can be a variable in terms of length of time. So it's not when it passes, or when the signature is, when it actually hits the governor's desk, that five-day mark.
I just want to thank you all for your advocacy in that space. And I know I got, I was able to connect with a couple different folks from the Trial Lawyers Association over the span of last week, and really just want to express my gratitude and appreciation for all of the good work that you all have been doing over several years. This was a very successful effort. Really excited to hear that it's headed to the governor's desk. Huge.
Congratulations.
Huge win. Thanks.
We'll let you know when we actually see it on the schedule.
That'd be great.
Okay, I'm going to pass it over to Christina.
Great. So moving into healthcare, page 10, a couple of bills I want to highlight for you. Page 10, 1593, this is, this would establish a new psychiatric teaching hospital that would be affiliated with the University of Washington. So this bill was a quote-unquote "five o'clock" bill in the Senate on opposite House cutoff, and it passed unanimously off the Senate floor. Because this bill was amended by the Senate, though, we'll have to go back to the House for concurrence, dispute, or conference. So we'll be tracking that closely. It was a very enthusiastic vote on that one. Moving down the page to vaccines, this 1638, it would repeal the personal belief exemption for the measles, mumps, and rubella vaccine. So there were several procedural moves that were made by Senate Republicans to block the bill from coming to the floor for debate and for vote, and the bill was brought to the Senate floor less than 15 minutes before opposite House cutoff. Yeah, it was tense couple hours there for that one. It was set aside to do the five o'clock bill, but then it was brought up again for debate and vote later on in the evening. And the bill ultimately did pass off the Senate floor with a vote of 22 to 20, oh, I'm sorry, 25 to 22. The version that passed off the Senate floor is the same as the bill was introduced, was originally introduced. So, and the passage of this bill was national news. It was covered nationally, including by The Washington Post. As the bill passed unanimously off the House floor on April 12th, and the Senate unanimously concurred on the House amendments, the bill now goes to the governor for his signature. And then also, and we're going to switch to page, do you have a question?
Oh, just before you leave healthcare.
Oh, there's more.
Okay, great.
On page 12, moving forward a little bit here. So we're looking at 1523, 5526, these are the governors' requested public option bills, which including establishing a public option called Cascade Care, establishing a standard plan design for health insurance plans sold on the exchange, and looking at other options to control costs, such as cost-sharing reductions. The House version failed to pass by opposite House cutoff, so it is considered dead. The Senate version is going to, is going into a conference committee following the Senate's refusal to concur on the House amendment, so they're still working on it over there. We'll keep close tabs on that. I'm happy to fill you in as that moves. And that was the last one I was planning on covering, so please ask your question.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. So one of the bills that we've worked on the entire time I've ever been in Olympia is rest and meal breaks for nurses. I know that this is something that we have...
Unit card playing.
Yes, you would think that we wouldn't have to be legislating that those who are taking care of our most vulnerable in moments of crisis also need to have a few moments to rest so that they can take care of themselves without having to make medical errors. House Bill 1155, is that part of the bills that we're also supporting this year?
And I've got that one in my section that I'll give an update on, but as I think many of you probably saw, there was some controversy over the weekend around some statements that were made. But the bill passed the House 63 to 34 on March 6th, and the Senate on April 16, 30 to 18, so that is still moving forward.
Great. And that's in your section regarding safety?
I think we stuck it in the safety/civil rights section, so maybe misplaced, but...
Okay, I can hold my questions till then if you'd like.
Okay, so anyone else? We're moving on to housing. We wanted, so on page 14, we wanted to touch on Senator Kuter's Bill 5600, which is, provides that a tenant is guilty of unlawful detainer when notice to pay rent or vacate has remained uncomplied with for a period of 14 days rather than three after service. This bill passed the full House floor on 5146, so a bit of a tight vote there. Because the bill was amended by the House, it will need to go back to the Senate for concurrence, dispute, or conference. We'll continue to track that one as well. I do want to deliver some sad news. So the SEPA bill that we've been, that we've been really excited about, it's been my favorite bill, it did fail to make it past the cutoff deadline. So a lot of really good work, that was the one that would provide SEPA exemptions for city sanctioned shelter and encampments. We'll continue to do a lot of good work with Senator Wynn's office, going into the interim and come back strong and ready to go next year. But he really was a good champion on that bill, and we really appreciate all that he and his team were able to do to move that as far as it did. And then I also wanted to touch base on 1406, which is on the top of page 13. Again, this bill is deemed necessary to implement the budget. It's continually going through rounds of discussions about funding levels and how to make the bill a bit more simple to administer from the state level. We are in those discussions right now, and while they're moving very quickly, we really hope to see this funded at the full amount as it's been proposed, and kind of stick with the plan, is what we're sticking with right now. There was a great coalition group that was together working on this over the interim, and we've remained together, strong on this bill during session. We'd really like to see it come out of the Senate with the funding levels at the same rate that we had discussed in the House. So we'll keep you posted on that. We still have great high hopes for this bill. We just want to make sure it's funded at a level that is actually beneficial to the communities who'd opt in. Yes.
On Senate House Bill, I'm sorry, Senate Bill 5600?
Yeah.
Did I hear you mention that there were some amendments?
There were, there were amendments, correct, yeah. I don't have those on top right in front of me, but I'm happy to share those with you. I apologize. I just forgot to print those.
All right, no problem. Look forward to following up. Thank you.
Thanks.
Lilly, you're up.
Oh, and sorry, moving on to the public safety section. I'm going to begin on the bottom of page 14, starting with sexual assault kit notice. That is the Representative Caldera proposal requiring that hospitals do not perform, the evaluations notify anyone who presents at an ER. And the House has refused to concur with the amendments in the Senate and has asked for a conference. So at this point, some of the concerns that you all have raised around the elimination of the $2,000 penalty for noncompliance may be added back in. We'll continue to keep you updated as that moves forward. Sexual assault, House Bill 1166, towards the bottom of page 15, that would fund the backlog of untested sexual assault kits in Washington State. That passed both chambers unanimously and is scheduled to be signed by the governor tomorrow at 3:30. So congratulations there. I'll move then to domestic violence, law enforcement, on the top of page 16, House Bill 1225. That's the Representative Jenkins bill that would require law enforcement officers secure firearms when responding to domestic violence incidents. That passed the House 60 to 38, and off the Senate floor Thursday, April 11. And then finally, I will touch on Native American women on the bottom of page 16, House Bill 1713, sponsored by Representative Mossbrucker, that would create training and liaison positions to improve best practices to address the issue of missing and murdered Indigenous women. That has also currently passed, excuse me, both chambers, and has been delivered to the governor for signature. So we'll be watching that one closely, and we'll let you know as soon as that's scheduled. And then I'm going to move over to the middle of page 18, under safety net and civil rights, beginning with certificates of discharge, or Representative Hanson's New Hope Act, on the bottom of page 18. That is House Bill 1041, that would address challenges and barriers to employment, housing, and other obstacles by expanding the eligibility to vacate certain nonviolent criminal offenses. That passed the House 95 to 0 on March 1st, and the Senate unanimously on April 3rd. Moving to wage and salary information on the upper-middle part of page 20, House Bill 1696. This is the Representative Dolan bill that would expand on last year's Equal Pay Act by providing, prohibiting employers from asking and tracking folks into their wage history. The House did not concur with changes made in the Senate and has asked them to recede on those issues. So those may be worked out in conference, and we'll continue to monitor, monitor those discussions as they move forward. And then the final two I'll highlight are, in the middle of page 21, the LGBTQ Commission passed the Senate 34 to 14 on March 6th, and off the House floor with a vote of 67 to 28 Friday, April 12. And then finally, I'd like to thank the Office of Immigrant and Refugee Affairs, COO, has done a tremendous amount of work on immigrants in the workplace. Senate Bill 5497, or the Keep Washington Working Act, that would put limitations on data sharing for various public agencies unless they are served with a judicial warrant. That passed the Senate, excuse me, that passed the Senate 30 to 16 on March 7th, and off the House floor Friday, April 12, with a vote of 57 to 38. And if there aren't any questions, we'll move on to transportation, but I think Councilmember Musqueta may have one about the meal and rest break bill?
Yeah, so I just want to confirm, given the overwhelming support that this bill's received, do you anticipate any concerns getting it to the governor's desk at this point?
I think we'll have to continue to monitor that closely. I do know that the most controversial amendments that Senator King proposed, that I believe stripped protections from overtime tax, did fail to move forward. And then it did move out of the Senate 30 to 18, so I still think there's strong support for that legislation moving forward.
Okay. So just by way of background, you know, this is an issue that we've tried to address probably for 12, 15 years now. The concept of intermittent rest break was argued at one point that people were able to take their breaks. They took three minutes here to go to the bathroom, they took a sip of water here, that was one minute, and they were trying to add that up as if it was a full break. We all know that that's not a full break. And when we're talking about protecting our most vulnerable folks who are in the healthcare system, these folks absolutely need an uninterrupted break. So if there's anything that we can do in the city of Seattle to support this, I'm very disappointed in my, in the remarks that I heard from Senator Walsh. I had the chance to work with her in the past and found her to be very reasonable. And I think, as she wrote in her subsequent message as an apology, "It was a long day, and she was tired, and she made an error," which is exactly the point. When you're tired, you make errors, and you need to be able to have breaks to make sure that you are doing your job correctly. So I think I'm paraphrasing what she wrote exactly, but that is the context in which we all think we need, we do better when we have our uninterrupted breaks. So if there's anything that we can do, city of Seattle, I'd love to make sure that folks know we're fully supportive of getting this across the finish line this year.
Definitely. We'll be in touch if there are any next steps we may need your help with.
And then moving on to our last section, transportation, starting on the bottom of page 21, the motorized foot scooter bill. The House did concur with the Senate amendments last week, so now it is en route to the governor's desk for signature. So congratulations. And then House Bill 1793, our automated traffic safety cameras. We were able to move this bill off of the House floor last week, which was huge. Thank you. Thanks to all of you, all of your work on that.
We appreciate you all engaging very directly in that effort.
Moved out bipartisan. There were four Democrats that fell off of the final vote count, and then three Republicans that actually signed on, including Representative Irwin, which we were very, very thrilled to see. Representative Irwin.
Irwin, he's a Seattle police officer.
Irwin, I thought you said Steve O'Ban.
No, Senate. But hopefully we'll get there, and he'll have the opportunity to vote yes for this bill. So we're anticipating, and we're hopeful that we'll see a public hearing in the Senate Transportation Committee this coming week. A committee has been scheduled, but an agenda has not been posted for it yet. So we're working to secure a hearing for the bill in the Senate. Senator Hopps, correct?
Who's been willing to give it a hearing?
Again, don't want to speculate, but we are encouraged, and we will let you know when it is finalized. So there were a couple amendments that were attached to that, so if anyone has any kind of questions about the state of the bill, happy to talk about what it looks like offline. So, all right. Any other questions? Okay. Well, we appreciate, this is our last formal briefing before this, before signee die. So depending on what happens and what the final, the final stage is, or where they're at with the budget and whatnot, we'll provide a report next week, but we will not be reporting to you guys in person, but letting, let you know where things, where things landed. That might not come Sunday night, but potentially since they're scheduled to adjourn on Sunday night. So potentially get you an update, probably around New Year Tuesday.
Thank you, Council President. When can you give us the dates of the, some of the, because there's a couple signings that I would like to attend, when we could get those dates?
Yeah, so those are just kind of posted, they're just posted at random, so we've been checking the governor's website about two or three times a day, just to see when the...
Karen has been diligently pulling those signings and monitoring some of the legislation we know.
And then we'll just kind of go through them, and then we'll circulate them as soon as we see them. And a lot of times, you won't get a ton of notice, but we will, we will work as hard as we can to give you as much notice as possible.
Yeah, we got to beat the Seattle traffic down to Olympia to get, that's what I'm worried about. Not that I would break the speed limit.
That's why we need automated enforcement.
I want to thank you too. The testimony I gave to the joint committee last week, it was, I was following three governors, Locke, Gregoire, and Evans. And I spoke on a panel with Commissioner Bowman, King County Councilmember Gossett as well, and it was jam-packed, to say the, say the least. But I want to thank you for all of the preparation. There were literally people I was told that were there at like 5:00 AM to get in the line, and the opposition, of course. But I want to thank you for all the preparation and the notes, and I was prepared for the Q and A because of your work. So thank you very much.
Thank you for coming back.
Thanks for attending.
Thank you so much for all your support and attention during this, the legislative session. We really appreciate it.
Okay, we'll keep the lines open.
Can I just add one more thank you?
Yes.
Thanks for all your work on the death penalty bill, and I'm so sorry that that died. I was, I mean, just sick to my stomach, truly. So I hope you all will carry on for me next year, making sure that that gets passed.
Given the support in the Senate, we're, you know, very hopeful for the future, and we'll continue to do as much work as possible to advance that. Luckily, we have the Supreme Court ruling behind us, but eliminating that in statute, understand that's a high priority, and we'll continue to work towards that goal.
All right, go get them.
So much.
Okay, very quickly, just to remind you, we do have at 10:30, a Select Committee on Homelessness and Housing Affordability that will take place. A few notes about this afternoon at 2:00. There are three items for a vote from the Governance Equity and Technology Committee. The first one is a reappointment of the Hearing Examiner, Ryan Vassal, that passed through committee last week, and two appointments to the International Special Review District Board, Tanya Wu and Sergio Max Legontala Moni, who's actually, Sergio's a reappointment. Little note about the format this afternoon, I think many of you understand it. It's a simple format, and that will be at the conclusion of our agenda during the adoption of other business. I will open up the floor for nominations for the vacancy. It's expected that you may nominate a person, and there will be a second, and then I will close nominations when you are nominated out, so to speak. And then from that point, we will call for the vote, and each council member will simply say a name as to the candidate of their choice. And we will continue that until we reach a vote of five for that person. If it looks, in my opinion, that that is unlikely, I'll conclude the agenda, and we will reconvene at the appropriate time. So that's sort of the format, should work, done it before. Any questions on that? Good, let's move on.
Are you going in alpha order?
Alpha order, no. I'm just going to open up the floor, because the order of nominations doesn't make any difference, because each nominee, each nominee could be considered. So the order...
I'm talking about council member alpha order.
Oh, well, number one, there's, it's already established, the roll call, the order of roll call for that particular meeting. And I haven't even looked at it, yeah. So we'll just go through the regular roll call and go through there. Okay, all right. Okay, Councilmember Swanton.
Thank you, President Allen. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
There are no items on today's city council agenda from the Human Services Equitable Development and Renters Rights Committee. The next meeting of the committee is scheduled for its regular time tomorrow, Tuesday, April 23rd at 2:00 PM. At that meeting, we will be discussing with community members from Bird Bar Place and the Central Area Senior Center about the delays from the executive in following through with the property transfer that have been promised for years. At this point, the delays are causing tangible harm, because one of the things that's happened is, it's very likely that Bird Bar Place could lose a $1.5 million state grant, that, you know, it's at least partially contingent on the property transfer, so we'll be discussing those issues. And we will also have the Renters Commission at the committee table to present on their work plan for the year.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Herbold.
Thank you. And on the issue of Bird Bar Place, appreciate you bringing this forward in your committee. We were told last week that it is going to be re-appropriated in the state budget. So the emergency is stalled, but it is an ongoing issue. It's been languishing for a long time, so I really appreciate your attention to it.
And just wanted to add that there was a really important community meeting last week that my staff, member Jonathan Rosenbloom and I were at, where about 150 to 200 senior members of the community who use the center, senior, the central on a regular basis, were there. were there, and it was a very engaged community meeting, and many of them are planning to come here on Tuesday.
Very good. Councilmember Herbald.
So today, I have a couple items on the full council agenda. They are not from my committee, though, they're from the PLEZ committee. We have a vote on the vacant building monitoring program legislative update. This is the planned update from our discussions during the budget process. During the budget process, we adopted some modifications to the existing vacant building monitoring program that will not take effect until June 1st, with the understanding that there were some additional changes that we needed to make to the legislation. And so that's going to be, that moved out of the PLEZ committee last week, and it'll be before us today at full council. Also, we have a vote on the North Delridge Action Plan Resolution, and this is a resolution that memorializes many years of work by community members of North Delridge to develop their neighborhood plan. And it also identifies some changes that they would like the Office of Planning and Community Development to consider making to the comp plan as part of our 2035 comp plan update. And I do have a small amendment, it's on the back of the page I'm passing out now, to the North Delridge Action Plan Priority Actions. And it just refers specifically to the Delridge Neighborhood Development Association's work around a wetland and our agricultural education project, and calls out the need that there really has to be some coordinated efforts with city departments on that project. Then, as far as our committee meeting this week, the Civil Rights Utilities, Economic Development, Arts Committee is meeting tomorrow. We are having our second committee discussion on the appointment of Marika Lockhart as Director of the Seattle Office for Civil Rights. In our last meeting, we discussed the responses to the council member and community member, commission member, questions that we had sent to her. If you haven't seen the responses, I'm happy to share them with you. In addition, we will have a briefing from the four civil rights commissions, the Seattle Women's Commission, the Human Rights Commission, the LGBTQ Commission, and the Commission for People with Disabilities on their 2019 work plan. And then finally, we'll be having a briefing on an ordinance that will be coming to us later related to the Cedar River watershed, specifically related to application of the herbicide Amazipir to treat invasive knotweed. As far as items coming up this week, on Wednesday, the 24th, we have Denim Day. So if folks can remember to wear their denim, that would be great.
Which day?
Denim Day.
I know, but what day?
Wednesday. And Denim Day is the International Day that is to raise awareness around victim blaming for survivors of sexual assault. As we know, April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and we are all invited to wear jeans in solidarity. There'll be a photo of the Ledge Department at 1:30 on Wednesday as an indication of our solidarity with the planners of this event, specifically the Seattle Women's Commission. And there are a couple of specific gatherings related to Denim Day on Wednesday. There is an 8:30 to 11:30 day that is specifically to honor Indigenous women with focus on provisions to strengthen the Violence Against Women Act for members of tribal nations to prosecute non-Indians for domestic violence, child abuse, sexual assault, and trafficking. And then in the evening, from 5:30 to 7:00, the Women's Commission is hosting a commemoration event, and myself and Councilmember Gonzalez will be there to participate. Lastly, on Friday, I'll be participating in the YWCA Stand Against Racism Panel. Shout out for the West Seattle Helpline, which turns 30 this year, and they'll have an event on Friday. And then finally, the Woodland Park Zoo is doing a fantastic outreach event at the South Park Community Center on Saturday between 1:00 PM and 3:00 PM. They have a mobile zoo that they're bringing out to South Park. So I hope folks in the community can join us. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Juarez.
Good morning. Thank you, Council President. The Civic, I'm laughing because at Live in D5 last year, what was it, a baby goat? And they put a collar on it and said, "Little Debbie." So Councilmember Muscata wanted to know if that baby goat would be at the zoo. Because I don't, I think Little Debbie's alive and well. The Civic Development Public Assets and Native Communities Committee moved an ordinance last Wednesday on the King County Conservation Futures Levy. The proposed ordinance will significantly streamline the Conservation Futures Levy, the CFL, the inter-local agreement, the amendment process. The streamlined process will allow faster reimbursement for Seattle's CFL projects that have been awarded funding by the King County Council in this pass out of committee. Second item, as you all know, is the Select Committee on the Library Levy. Last Thursday, the Select Committee on the Library Levy meant to hold another round of discussions for potential amendments. Central staff provided us with a chart to compare implications of each amendment on the residents as well as the proposed levy. The amended proposal will be up for a vote in this afternoon's full council meeting. Obviously, it passed out of committee. I want to thank Councilmember Muscata, Councilmember O'Brien, and Councilmember Gonzalez for offering, and we accepted, and we passed their critical and important amendments. And a particular big thanks to Asha at Central Staff and Nagin in my office, who worked really well together in getting these amendments together and getting us over the finish line. As you know, since this passed out of committee, it'll go to full council, and then hopefully, if it passes today, which I'm hoping it will, then it will be placed on the August ballot. And then the amount will be, I believe, totally, now with the amendments, 219 million. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Juarez. Councilmember Muscata.
Good morning, Mr. President and Council. Today, at the full council meeting, we will have Resolution 31879. This is the resolution that passed out of our committee last week. After three weeks of engagement with folks across the Legislative Department, seeking advice and feedback as we create a work group that will help us identify improvements to our personnel policies to support a safe and responsive workplace in the City of Seattle's Legislative Department. As a reminder, through this resolution, we're outlining our expectations for conduct for all legislative branch members and with all legislative branch members. This reaffirms our commitment that our staff should be treated with respect and should treat others with respect, obviously, in addition to us as electeds being held responsible to the same code of conduct requirements. And we're also making sure that folks are free from harassment, intimidation, assault, or other threatening behaviors in the workplace. We're going to be creating a work group to advise the department on policies, and those policy recommendations will come back to us by the end of August. That will give us a better chance to understand how we will update our personnel policies to ensure a safe workplace, make sure that our all workers here, including electeds, are free from harassment and intimidation, and that we are being responsible to our employees, and we are acting as responsible employers in this new era. So I want to thank everybody, including Monica Simmons and the Council President, and all of you as electeds for really leading by example and showing that we can, we can implement exactly what we hold our values to be true. And this also follows the model that we see from the State Legislative Department that did something very similar. So thank you for that. It will be on full council agenda today with a unanimous recommendation for passage. The second thing that's happening today is our Select Committee on Homelessness and Housing Affordability. I'm handing out packets, which are now online, and I want to hand this out to you so you have at least a few minutes to take a look at it. Our apologies for not being able to post this earlier. We did get some of the materials over the weekend and frankly, this morning. So this includes presentations from HSD on the request that we had to provide a benchmark or dashboard status. Unfortunately, they were not able to pull that together. So thank you, Councilmembers Swant, for your previous committee meeting. You requested, I think, something very similar, and this is an end-of-year report. They've included some slides. I will note that this is a placeholder. This is not fulfilling the request that we had for a dashboard to be presented, but they'll talk a little bit more about that. So in case folks didn't have a chance to watch Councilmember Swant's committee hearing, we will be able to hear some of that information. Again, this is not intended to be a repeat, and I apologize, but we did want to have this as a baseline understanding for the dashboard or benchmark presentation that was not forthcoming but will be at some point. We'll also have a panel presentation from three of our community partners that say, basically, yes, we are being judged by this criteria. In the ideal world, if we had a magic wand, we would be judged by X, Y, and Z criteria. How many people were able to stay with a case manager? How many people were able to stay on their medications? How many kiddos were able to stay in the same school? Those are some indicators that we're going to do some brainstorming today with our friends at HSD as well. We'll also have a presentation on how folks did in responding to the Seattle storm, or I guess I should say, the Seattle freeze, when we had the really big snowstorms in February. We want to know how we did as a city with getting folks into, not just a warm place to stay inside, but into resources in the long term. Thank you, Councilmember Baghisham, for making that request. And I think Councilmember Herbald, you had made a similar request when we were getting conflicting data earlier. So we're going to get clarification on that. And then lastly, we'll get an update from Mark Dones and Tess in the mayor's office about the implementation of this cross-governmental entity between Seattle and King County that we are working towards building to address homelessness. Again, hope you guys can stay. We'll have that meeting as soon as we finish with council briefing this morning. Next, on the Housing, Health, Energy, and Workers' Rights Committee, we will be meeting on Thursday, May 2nd, the day after our big International Day of Solidarity with Workers on May 1st. We will have appointments to the Labor Standards Advisory Committee. We will have appointments to the Seattle City Light Review Panel. We'll also have a confirmation process that we will be beginning with Dr. Khan, who has been nominated to lead the new Office of the Employee Ombud. She has submitted her, sorry, the mayor has submitted all of the required materials for her packet confirmation. And thanks to all of you, we submitted 13 questions to her on Friday. We incorporated many of the questions and comments that you all had for her consideration and report back to us. We should be able to get that to you by next Thursday or Friday at the very latest, and then you'll have almost a week to review those. And then we will also have the hotel workers and industry standards discussion continuation. At this meeting, we'll have at the table folks from the hotels, the hotel industry themselves, to talk about some of the issues and challenges they're facing. And lastly, we'll begin our conversation in more detail on the Fort Lawton land use. We'll have a full briefing and discussion. We began this conversation very briefly at our last meeting, and I want you to know that this will be the meeting where we get into some of the heart of the details. So we'll be distributing materials, I'm sorry, we have distributed materials to all offices, and we'll be hosting a public hearing, again, just for your calendars. Hope you can all come on May 21st at 5:00 PM here in council chambers. Lastly, I do have one more announcement. We have the folks who are at the Seattle Planning Commission, who have taken their recommendations that you all heard us applaud. I think across the board, the recommendations from the Seattle Planning Commission were referenced quite frequently in our discussions around mandatory housing affordability. They put out a report in late 2018 that basically talked about what it would look like to change single-family zoning to a more family-friendly, neighborhood-friendly approach that would be residential housing. They're having two forms coming up. Thank you, Councilmember Juarez, for pointing that out. There's two events. One is on May 4th at 10:00 AM, and one is on April 27th at 10:00 AM. Two different locations. The May 4th one is at the South Side Commons, and then April 24th event is at North Seattle College. So we've retweeted this on our Twitter this morning, in case folks can help get the information out. This is really helping us talk about what's the next step. As the week that we had the MHA hearing, we also had a lunch and learn that day saying, "MHA, yay, now what?" And this is part of the "now what" answer. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Councilmember O'Brien.
Thank you, Council President Harrell. A few things to discuss here. On this afternoon's agenda, we will start off with the resolution providing an honorary designation of 22nd Avenue Northwest, between Northwest 56 and 57 Streets, is Rob Mattson Way. So that is the street that fronts the Ballard branch of the Seattle Public Library. Rob Mattson worked for the City of Seattle, I believe, for 40 years before retiring back in 2013. He passed away last year, and so he's often referred to as the mayor of Ballard. We will take up a couple items from the Planning, Land Use, and Zoning Committee. The first is an ordinance related to monitoring and inspecting vacant buildings for compliance with the Building Code. This legislation follows up on legislation that was passed previously in trying to establish a protocol for how we move forward. What this bill would do would be to require buildings that are subject to monitoring and inspecting to have ongoing monitoring inspection anticipated at about one-month intervals. And if buildings have successfully achieved compliance for three inspections in a row, they would then be removed from the list requiring ongoing monitoring. There's a caveat that the department wanted to be clear with. There's a backlog of buildings, and they may not be able to hold to an inspection once a month at the beginning as they work through that backlog. The hope being that over the relatively near future, buildings will come into compliance or maintain compliance so that with the existing staff, they'll be able to keep up with that. There will also be a resolution, Councilmember Herbald mentioned, recognizing the North Delridge Action Plan. From the Sustainability and Transportation Committee, we will take up appointments to the Urban Forestry Commission and the Seattle Pedestrian Advisory Board. That is all for this afternoon. There's no meeting this week for the Sustainability and Transportation Committee, nor is there a meeting for the Planning, Land Use, and Zoning Committee. But I will mention that the elected leadership group is meeting on Friday. Just as a reminder to the public, the elected leadership group is a group of council members, Seattle City Council members, King County Council member, Seattle mayor, King County executive, and a representative of the Seattle Port Commission, serving an advisory role to the Board of Sound Transit, making recommendations on alignment and station location for the environmental impact statement that is about to be commenced for the West Seattle and Ballard extensions of lay rail, so part of ST3. So this is our final meeting Friday morning at 9:30. We'll be meeting at the Ruth Fisher Boardroom at Sound Transit's headquarters. The expectation is that that group will make a recommendation to the Board. The Citizens Advisory Committee.
Stakeholder.
Stakeholder Advisory Group, the SAG, thank you very much, had their last meeting last week, and so they have a suite of recommendations that we will be briefed on and consider as we move forward towards making a recommendation from that group. Those ELG meetings are noticed as special committee meetings for the Sustainability and Transportation Committee, because we have a quorum of council members on the elected leadership group. That is all for me.
Very good. Thanks, Councilmember O'Brien. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. There are three items on this afternoon's full council agenda from the Gender Equity, Safe Communities, New Americans in Education Committee. All three items are related to the Implementation and Evaluation Plan for the Families Education Preschool and Promise Levy that was passed by voters this last fall. The first bill is Council Bill 119480, which will approve the Implementation and Evaluation Plan for the levy and appropriate levy dollars to the Department of Education and Early Learning in accordance with the levy that was passed. There were several amendments considered in my committee, nine amendments, to be specific, to the mayor's originally introduced plan. And I just wanted to give folks a quick little rundown of those amendments. The first amendment was to prioritize students who would be invested in as a result of these levy dollars. There was a few categories left out of the original implementation plan that's transmitted by the mayor's office, and we reinserted those student populations back into the language of the Implementation and Evaluation Plan. Specifically, we reintegrated refugee and immigrant students, homeless students, English-language learners, and LGBTQ students. The second amendment is with regard to the K-12 investment area goal. The original proposal had focused pretty squarely on only college and job readiness experiences that promote high school graduation. We reinserted the language that would also recognize that the K-12 investment area goal should include academic preparation, expanded learning opportunities, and social-emotional skill building in addition to college and job readiness experiences. Our third amendment reinserted requirements that would permit Our third amendment reinserted requirements that would permit the city council to continue to have oversight as the oversight entity of the various investments through the FEP levy. We created three different categories. The first category is a set list of things that the city council expects to need to both get notice and approve before modifications occur. That includes funding levels, tuition requirements for the Seattle Preschool Promise, and any modifications to eligibility for the Seattle Promise program. The second category is a notice-only requirement, which would require that Dill provide the city council a 60-day notification of certain changes that they are making as they are implementing the FEP levy dollars. That includes notification of proposed agreement modifications to the Family Support Services worker program that we will invest in, any modifications to the Seattle Preschool Promise child selection prioritization, or any proposed changes to the eligibility requirements for childcare subsidies through our Seattle Preschool Promise. The thought being that after the -- through the 60-day notification period, that would provide city council an opportunity to provide the department with different direction if we disagree with that proposed modification. But we wanted to make sure that Dill had the flexibility that they needed to have in order to make sure that they continue to be innovative and nimble as they evaluate the success of how these dollars are being implemented and rolled out with our partners. The last is a category of various topics that would be required -- that Dill would be required to provide the city council with annual reporting, and that's just a reporting requirement only. The fourth amendment was a modification to the Seattle Preschool Promise tuition scale. This meant a few things. One is that we increased the steps in the tuition scale from 25 steps to 30 steps. The goal there was to make it a little less burdensome for families who are jumping from one income bracket to the next income bracket, and to make sure that the tuition that they were going to be paying per month was not felt as significantly to those families who are moving from one income bracket to the next. So this is, I think, a much more equitable way for us to require an increase in tuition for those families who have seen an increase in their income. So at the end of the day, the minimum tuition subsidy will be 5%, meaning that the high-income family earners who participate in our Seattle Preschool Promise will be the ones who are paying the most into the program in this cross-subsidization model, and really excited about being able to have a little bit more of an equitable approach here. So the fifth amendment is with regard to Seattle Promise. This would require the department to evaluate -- excuse me, to document clearly that part-time attendance is allowable under the Seattle Promise program. One of the statistics that we heard in committee briefing is that an incredibly large percentage of high school students who are graduating and thus would be qualified for Seattle Promise actually attend Seattle colleges on a part-time basis. And so we -- the original implementation plan was crafted in such a way that certainly seemed to imply that you had to attend full-time -- Seattle colleges full-time in order to qualify for Seattle Promise. And we want to make sure that those students who need to attend part-time are able to do so under certain requirements. The sixth amendment is to require a racial equity toolkit on various aspects of the Seattle Promise program, in particular, expanding to serve students who wish to enroll exclusively on part-time status, as opposed to those students who might slip in and out of full-time to part-time status. And the last piece would be around making sure we monitor a term-of-art that the colleges use that is referred to as satisfactory academic progress requirements, and really wanted to make sure, at the end of the day, that there aren't any unintended consequences as a result of the structure of the Seattle Promise program, which is a last-dollars-in type of model. The seventh amendment is tying really closely through the Seattle Promise program a requirement that the college advisors that we are paying for through the levy are actually regularly and systematically connecting students who might need additional wraparound services that the city offers outside of the levy to actually connect those students with those services. So things like the Utility Discount Program or ORCA Lift, and requiring that Seattle Promise monitor those referrals, and then also monitor and report to us the take-up rate of those monitors. Again, acknowledging that our lowest-income students are going to receive the least amount of tuition assistance. It's important for us to make sure that we are being very intentional, deliberate, in connecting those low-income students to other services that the city currently offers through different programs. The eighth amendment is labor harmony provision in the Request for Proposal and RFI responses. So this is a really important value to the city council, and it has continued to be. And so what we want to make sure that we do moving forward is that our partners are -- that we are asking to -- that we are funding through this program, that they make a stated commitment to labor harmony and labor peace and labor laws. And so that's an important amendment that we made, and I want to thank Councilmember Moskata for working with my office on amending revising the language. The ninth amendment are a bunch of technical changes that I won't bore you with, but were super important for consistency and language purposes. So that is the amended version of Council Bill 119480 that we will vote on this afternoon in full council. The second and third items on the full council agenda are Resolutions 31881 and 31882, which would approve the partnership agreements with Seattle colleges and Seattle Public Schools, District Number 1. The partnership agreements, as introduced and passed out of committee, were already considered and approved by the Seattle School Board, so now it's our turn to consider the resolutions that would approve both of those partnership agreements with those two partners. Okay. Happy to answer any questions about that, if any folks have any. Okay, seeing none, I will move along. So my committee will have our regularly scheduled meeting this Wednesday, April 24th, at 9:30 a.m. here in council chambers. We will consider five items. We will hear three additional CPC, Community Police Commission, appointment nominations. This includes two new appointments and one reappointment to the Community Police Commission as proposed by the mayor. Secondly, we will hear a presentation from our Office of Police Accountability. They will be reporting out on their 2018 annual report. And then lastly, during committee, we will receive a presentation on the Executive's response to SLY 382A1 2019 by Seattle IT, SPD, and the mayor's office. This slide was sponsored by Budget Chair Bagshaw during last year's budget deliberations. It directed the Seattle Information Technology Department and the Seattle Police Department to identify a recommended database for the law enforcement assisted diversion or LEAD program, and to estimate the cost of acquiring and utilizing that database. So we'll have representatives from the Executive, along with Lisa Dugard of the Public Defender Association, at the committee table to present on the Executive's response to that particular slide. So this is a really important part of continuing to monitor through an evidence-based strategy the data and the work that the LEAD program is doing, so that we have a better sense of how to evaluate the quality of the program as we continue to pursue what I think is a very strong interest to take the program to a larger scale across the city.
Councilwoman Herbold.
Thank you. I just want to flag that in addition to the database needs for LEAD, there's also, in order to enable their expansion that this council funded into the Southwest Precinct, we need to work to get them some space. I'm just flagging that as an issue.
A little -- another little flag. Councilwoman Bagshaw, do you have anything?
No, just space, office space, or time-space.
Office. So we're looking forward to receiving the response. We don't have the actual response to the slide yet. We anticipate, and I have received a commitment from the city budget office, that I will receive that response today by noon. And that is my expectation, is that I will have it by noon today. We will get it circulated to folks as soon as possible. I'll flag it for you all as soon as possible, so you know that it's come in. But really excited about having that first initial conversation in my committee this Wednesday at 9:30 a.m. Just really quickly, wanted to provide folks a quick update on matters related to the consent decree over the Seattle Police Department. We received early this morning a notification from the court ordering the city of Seattle to make an appearance in his courtroom, in Judge Robar's courtroom, for a status conference. That status conference will occur on Wednesday, May 15th, at 11:00 a.m., and it will be to address the issues that the court raised, and its order to show cause as to why the city of Seattle is not out of full and effective compliance with his prior order related to the sustainment period and the consent decree. So it's an important hearing for the city. We will hear -- have an opportunity to hear from the judge, his opinion as it relates to whether or not the city should remain in full and effective compliance with the consent decree as a result of the city's agreement with the Seattle Police Officers Guild in relation to their collective bargaining agreement. So for those of you who might be interested in attending, feel free to reach out to me. Happy to provide you details of where you need to be in order to listen to the hearing, but I certainly will be attending on behalf of the city council, and will be eager to report back to the rest of you what happens at that status conference. And I'm working closely with both the mayor's office and CPC and the city attorney's office on making sure that we know exactly what to expect. And then lastly, I'll just talk about a lunch and learn event that I am going to be hosting here in council chambers this Friday, April 26th, at 12:00 p.m. I will be hosting Puget Sound Regional Council, Transportation Choices Coalition, and other community partners here in chambers to have a conversation around incorporating equity into our regional growth strategies. So many of us serve on the Puget Sound Regional Council committees throughout our span here on the city council, and I'm excited to be able to host them, to have them come in and have a conversation with us about their Vision 2050, which is sort of the region's version of what -- of a comp plan, if you will, but it will focus on transportation, and housing, and economic development throughout our entire region. And I'm really excited about being able to host them in council chambers this Friday at noon, and to be able to provide the public a little bit more information about how this impacts our regional growth throughout the tri-county region. So a lot of folks may not be aware that they actually have a draft supplemental environmental impact statement comment period that is currently underway. The comment period closes on April 29th, and so we'll talk a little bit more about how people can become engaged in that. And I'll go ahead and hand out some flyer for this Friday's event. You're all welcome to join us. We have noticed it as a special committee meeting of my committee to allow additional council members who may wish to attend to attend, and would certainly welcome you all. And I know that I said that that was the last thing, but I wanted to mention one other thing, which is that this Tuesday at 6:00 p.m., the King County Sexual Assault Resource Center, as part of Sexual Assault Awareness Month, will be hosting a really interesting panel at the Mo Pop Museum that is free and open to the public. It is a conversation with a slate of journalists to really talk about the role that media plays in shifting the culture around sexual assault, and how the general public talks about sexual assault. Again, this event is open to the public, and they will be discussing, from a media journalist's perspectives, their observations and their conversations around how to report on sexual assault. So former -- our former colleague, Tim Burgess, will actually be introducing the evening, and the panelists will include Sarah Jean Green from the Seattle Times, DeeDee Sun from Cairo 7 News, and Erica Barnett from the CS for Crank. Again, free and open to the public. Registration is required, however, and you can go to casarc.org to register. Program begins at 6:00 p.m., and it will be at the JBL Theater in the Museum of Pop Culture.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gonzalez. Councilwoman Bagshaw.
Thank you. Were we supposed to start at 10:30?
We've noted it for 10:30, which says we cannot start before 10:30, but certainly we can start after 10:30, so.
All right, that's good.
It's between us and the start of the meeting.
Very good. Thank you. We have nothing this afternoon from the Finance and Neighborhoods Committee, and I would stop there, except for the fact that our next scheduled meeting is Wednesday, May 8th. We've got a couple of appointments to the Pioneer Square Preservation Board, but mostly we've got a number of big report items. One, Councilmember Herbold, I know you'll be especially interested in the fourth quarter CIP monitoring report. We'll also have the first quarter 2019 employment ordinance, and our FAS department will have its Race and Social Justice Initiative presentation. And Councilmember Moskata, you mentioned that today during our special meeting, we'll be hearing from Mark Doan and others. I also want to acknowledge that our next Regional Governance Clients Group meeting will reconvene this Thursday. I believe it's at noon. But that leads into all of the things that have been happening in the last couple of weeks, and I want to really highlight the fact that in the media, we are seeing, I think, a real obvious understanding about homelessness being not simply a problem related to drug addiction, but recognizing that we do need more housing, that the mental health money, behavioral health money that we're seeing from the legislature is especially critical now, and then working on our criminal justice reform. That's the intersection of those three things. I believe that the community is beginning to see in a different light, and I want to thank many who have been working on that, and to acknowledge in the mayor's office something that we really emphasized during our last budget cycle, and that was to have the Low Acuity Program get up and operational in the first quarter. I understand we'll have a report, thanks to Leslie Brinson, and to John Ehrenfeld and Chief Scoggins from our fire department, that we will be able to get this underway this year, which was the request we made, so that the first responders have an option. Rather than sending out two ladder trucks and two ambulances to deal with one person on the sidewalk, we will have this low-acuity response with places for people to go. So I want to acknowledge and say thanks to all who have been working on that. And then also, another thing we had put money in the budget for was handwashing stations in and around downtown, and that was to avoid the problems that we saw in San Diego with hepatitis A. We now have our first confirmed case of hepatitis A here in the city, and it's all the more important that we get either the Portland Lou's with the handwashing stations on the outside, or the handwashing stations we've been talking about from a public health standpoint. So I'm going to be really pushing hard on that to make sure that we have available to all of us these kind of handwashing stations. It's great if you've got money and you can go into a coffee shop and buy a cup of coffee, but if you don't, we need to have these available and accessible to everybody. So I just want to acknowledge the good work that people are doing. And once again, that intersection of more housing, mental health and behavioral health funding, and the criminal justice reform, we got the time to do it now, and the focus, and I think the will. So I'm looking forward to continuing to work with the executive on that. And thanks to our Parks Department, thanks for the good work you've been doing around City Hall Park, and with our friends in the King County Courthouse. Everybody's very thankful for your help and work on that. Done.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bagshaw.
Council President -- oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just a quick public service announcement. At this time, we'll do a beginning of the meeting starting at 10:45 to give folks five minutes to get to go to take a break. Rest and meal breaks are important. And if you have not signed in yet, there is a sign-in sheet for public testimony up there.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Bagshaw. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Just really quickly, wanted to touch on the public safety issue that Councilmember Bagshaw just brought up a moment ago. We are seeing a lot of activity within our media outlets, reporting on what the city is or isn't doing as it relates to public safety. I wanted to just let folks know a couple of things that my office is -- or three things that my office has been doing. One is, we continue our work around the criminal justice realignment work. That's an action that the city council took almost a year ago now at this point, and we continue to work with our partners within the Seattle Municipal Court System, and with other organizations that understand what it means to take harm reduction approaches to really make sure that we are addressing the realities around the disproportionality in terms of who comes into contact with the criminal justice system. And of course, that work is never as easy, or as simple, or as fast as we'd like it to be, but it is incredibly important, and we continue to work on that particular issue out of my office. The second thing is, is that several weeks ago, the mayor and I had a conversation around organizing a regional task force that would look at both King County systems and the city city of Seattle criminal systems to really begin the process of identifying where the public safety issues are real and where other responses that are more harm reduction and more about diversion to mental health systems is appropriate. And really excited to be able to partner with the mayor's office in terms of that body of work. Kirsten Aristad, our executive director for council central staff, will be the point on that particular work group. And so she and I have had good conversations about how to continue to advance council's priorities through that area. And I just want to make really clear that I think we all on the city council share concerns that we hear from our community members around being able to address legitimate, reasonable, public safety issues that are creating safety concerns, not just for people who are housed, but also for folks who are experiencing homelessness. And I take those concerns very seriously, and will continue to work on those issues in partnership with the mayor's office and with King County around addressing some, hopefully, short-term and long-term strategies to address some of these safety concerns that we're seeing play out in a lot of neighborhoods, including downtown throughout the city of Seattle. And then lastly, some of you may have seen a report that was effectively Yakima County officials releasing inmates near encampments here in the city of Seattle. That is obviously concerning for many, many reasons. And I wanted to advise folks that I have asked council central staff to begin the process of collecting different types of information to truth-test some of the things that I have seen in the media reports around this particular practice. As a sort of first point of fact, I want to make sure that council members know for a fact that the city of Seattle does not currently contract or have a jail contract with Yakima County. That contract was discontinued in 2010, which makes the report that there are inmates being dropped off in downtown Seattle that much more concerning and questionable in terms of the practice that is being reported by Yakima County officials. So we will continue to work on that issue and identify information, and I'm happy to share that with you all and the general public as I receive it.
Thanks for clarifying some of the misinformation out there, Councilwoman Gonzalez. Okay, so Councilwoman Moskata, we have now one minute, since you start at 10:45, but I'm anticipating you may want to give us a few more minutes, I think, but it will be within your discretion. Okay. Thanks for sharing all the information with that.
10:48.
10:48? That's a rugged mistake. You always wait till you-- Okay, so we'll convene the select committee at 10:48, and with that, we'll stand adjourned.